Hi, good morning and welcome. Welcome to the July 24, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. This morning, I just have a few announcements to make. I'd like to remind everyone that on Monday, July 29, at 7:00 PM, Commissioner Dennis's Citizens Advisory Board will meet to review the recommended 2020 budget and also receive an update on the Wind and Solar Energy Operations Moratorium in Sedgwick County. The board meets at 7:00 o'clock at the Goddard School District Conference Center, which is at 315 South Main in Goddard. And then also, I wanted to remind everyone to mark your calendars and join us for an event on Wednesday, July 31, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the Wichita Boat House. This is the first public engagement session for the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan, and it's really important to have a lot of public engagement and input in this process to make sure that it is successful. So I'd like everyone to mark their calendars for 4:30 to 6:30 at the Wichita Boat House next Wednesday, July 31. Commissioners, today is our first public hearing for the 2020 budget. Residents may leave their comments online at sedgewickcounty.org, or they can come to the second budget hearing, which will be at 6:00 on Monday, August 5, here in the commission meeting room at the courthouse, 525 North Main. On the agenda this morning, we have two proclamations, appointments from several advisory boards. Commissioners, you'll consider an agreement with the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County Fire District 1 about the Integrated Care Team Pilot Program. Then we'll have our first public hearing for the 2020 recommended budget for the county. And then there's a grant renewal for the Department on Aging. Commissioners will consider a contribution to KBC Health Systems, and you'll have the report of the bids and contracts. Then we have a fire meeting after that, which includes a public hearing for the 2020 Fire District Budget and a few items related to Station 31 in Andale, among other things. Chairman, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. And we do have a full meeting today. I appreciate everyone that's in the audience today and those that are joining us on KPTS and online. And I also want to welcome some distinguished guests that we have in the audience today. We have Queen Mother Nana Coriu Piugu Aplum II. I hope I got that correct. I want to welcome you very much today, and we do have a proclamation we'll be reading momentarily. I also want to welcome Chief Tammy Snow from Wichita Fire Department, our Director of OMD is here today also, along with our Fire Chief, and our Director of EMS, it looks like, who's in the audience. We've got a lot of important people. And then a couple of folks that are near and dear to my heart are going to be getting a proclamation today for the Veterans Expo. So with that, I think it's time that we get to business. I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, July 24, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Indication to be led by Pastor Kane McIntyre, May's United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Pray with me, please. Dear Lord, to the understanding that we each have of you and your goodness, I thank you for this privilege and this honor to lead these city leaders and empowers and those from outside of American soil as well into prayer. Lord, first and foremost, I pray that we would be of the mind to bring positive change and to leave a positive impact over this city and over this county, Lord, as we seek to do great things. God, also, I pray specifically for these leaders. Lord, as I was making a cup of coffee this morning, I started paying attention to the pressure that it takes to make a great cup of coffee. We thank you so much for coffee because it gets us into the mood to meet and commune with one another so early in the morning. But, Lord, you also make other great things out of pressure. You make diamonds, and you also make leaders. And so, God, I pray for each of these county commissioners. I pray for their families as well. I pray that you would help them understand that they can find peace in you, that they have a great role and responsibility in front of them, and I pray that you would bless them as they seek to do it to the best of their ability. Also, Father, I thank you for the first responders and the people that represent them that are here today as well. I pray that you would keep them safe, pray you would bless them for the way that they serve us so sacrificially. And it's all these things I ask. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor McIntyre, thank you very much for being here this morning. We sincerely appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I have a number of folks signed up to speak on public agenda. The first individual is Jeff Peear. Talk about, it's on the Exploration Placeboard. Good morning. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Commissioner Dennis and I hope to speak to the budget as...
You're welcome to do that.
Okay, very well.
We can hold it for that.
All right.
All right, thank you. And let me ask, I have a number of folks that are signed up to speak, I think, on the budget. Do they want to speak? Anyone want to speak now, or do you want to wait until we get to the budget item?
Waiting.
Okay, we'll speak during the budget item. I also have one individual signed up to speak about KBC, and I understand they do want to speak during that time. So other than those items on the public agenda that we will speak to during the agenda portion of it, does anyone in the audience here today wish to speak on something other than that that didn't have an opportunity to sign up to speak today? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Queen Mother Nana Coriu Piugu Aplum II.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Commissioner Cruz to go down to the podium, and while she's going down to the podium, she's going to read the proclamation for this item today and ask for a vote on the item. And following that, I understand that there will be a small presentation. So as soon as Commissioner Cruz makes it to the podium, we'll move on with the next Mr. Cruz, thank you for reading that.
Sure, thank you for asking me, and welcome. Whereas in 2012, the African-American Council of Elders led a delegation from Wichita to visit West Africa, and whereas conversations have continued since 2012 with representatives from the Republic of Ghana regarding education, agriculture, aviation, manufacturing, and other cultural exchange learning opportunities. And whereas in the spring of 2013, the Konar Nini Sakiti and the Deputy Queen Mother visited Wichita with a 10-person delegation to continue discussions, relations, and networking possibilities. And whereas today, we welcome the delegation from Ghana, including Paramount Queen Mother Nana Coriu Piugu Aplum II, who is visiting our region to resume talks regarding education, agriculture, aviation, manufacturing, and other opportunities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 24, 2019, as Queen Mother Nana Coriu Piugu Aplum II Day, and ask residents of Sedgwick County to welcome our distinguished guests as they visit our community. Now, to accept this proclamation, I would love for you guys to come over here, is the African-American Council of Elders.
Commissioner, can you make a motion real quick?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we declare today as Queen Mother Nana Coriu Piugu Aplum II.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you.
I'd like to, maybe we can just, would you like to say something?
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Colonel Dennis Actir II, on behalf of the people of Manjaro, and on my own behalf, I say thank you most especially to the county commissioners and everyone here for this nice and awesome proclamation. I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And these are for the beads to my lady, Lysine, please.
Thank you. Wow. Would it be possible for you to just say something about these beads that you mentioned last night? Would that be okay?
Yeah, these beads are made of broken glass. It's been milled into powder. We added a small amount of color. We designed it, and it comes out beautifully like this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And here's your proclamation. Would you like to say something?
Thank you. On behalf of the Council of Elders, as well as Wichita-area sister cities, we thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here today. It's a great honor.
Stand in front of this. Would that be okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring Veterans Awareness Expo Day.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the Fourth Annual Veterans Awareness Expo occurs on August 3, 2019, and is a free event for veterans and their families to connect with over 15 veteran service organizers. Whereas Wichita holds the Veterans Awareness Expo on the first Saturday of August each year at the Mid-American Indian Center to honor our veterans, and whereas by recognizing veterans from all armed forces, including the Reserves and National Guard, the Veterans Awareness Expo shows our community's appreciation for their military service to our country. And whereas Vet-to-Vet Sport Command and Veteran Providers Coalition of Sedgwick County hosts this special event to bring together valuable veterans' resources. And whereas a special program is held during the Veterans Awareness Expo this year, and the theme being McConnell Air Force Base, our new base commander, Richard Tanner, and the new KC-46 tanker. And whereas Sedgwick County Register of Deeds Office will be at the Veterans Awareness Expo to assist veterans in registering their DD-214s and obtaining their veteran military discount cards. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman David Dennis, and the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 3 as Veteran Awareness Expo Day, and ask the veterans and residents of Sedgwick County to attend the Fourth Annual Veterans Awareness Expo and thank veterans and their families for their service and their sacrifice. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And Patty and Hutch are both here today to accept this. Morning, Patty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Wichita. Good morning, KPTS, our good friends there. Howard, he goes by Hutch, and we are so excited. The very first thing I want to say, though, is Tanya Buckingham, Register of Deeds, is here, and she reported to us this morning that in just over two weeks that there have been 163 DD-214s registered with the county. We are thrilled about that statistic. 360 military and veteran discount cards have been issued thus far. They will be at the expo, and so veterans and families, open to the public as well, please come down for this event.
Can you mention something about the museum?
Yes. So veterans and military active duty can get into the museum side of the Indian Center that day for free and discount tickets for $4 for family members, but the event is absolutely free. We're going to have a military restoration car show kind of in the back with all kinds of vehicles, food trucks, and music, and the Midwest Battle Betty Dogs will be there, service dogs, and the Cloud Nine therapeutic equine horses will be on site. What else?
The OM, 60, it says over 50, but 60 service providers, and it will be covering everything from homeless to hospice, and all points in between, education. We'll have military recruiters there, employment. There's just, no stone will go unturned as far as the services and the organizations and agencies that will be there to provide services. And it's our fourth annual, very excited about that. Last year was the USS Wichita, and we could have been more proud about that. And, but this year, in our very own backyard, we're going to be, the theme is going to be McConnell Air Force Base and the new tanker. And as already mentioned by the Chairman, David Dennis, we are going to be very honored to have...
Colonel Richard Tanner, our brandy base commander's going to be there, and so we're excited to introduce him to the community, and we really thank you for this proclamation and declaring this an Expo Day. The first Saturday in August, mark your calendars, every single year we plan on having this expo, and the community couldn't be better supporting this.
Yes, and it's becoming a staple, you know. It's the first Saturday of August. But to wrap this up, I want to say, you know, I've been around a long time, you know. I'm 62 years old, so I've seen a lot of regimes. And the city council that we have here...
County Commissioners.
County Commissioner and Chair, David Dennis, and Jim Howell, and Michael O'Donnell, Commissioner Michael O'Donnell, Commissioner Jim Howell. Like I said, I've seen a lot of things through the year, but nobody has supported our veterans more than these individuals have, and I can't say that enough, and I would know.
Amen.
So with that said, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Patty and Hutch, thank you sincerely for being here. First of all, I should have said Patty Neffco and Howard Hutchison. They're such close friends that they're Patty and Hutch to me, and they're Patty and Hutch to all the veterans. We sincerely thank what you do for our veterans every single day, and Commissioner Howell would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually would make a difference with your comment. I think that the people who support veterans most in this community is you. You're involved in everything. If there's a veterans service in some form or fashion happening in this community, you guys are aware of it, and you are involved in it, and you're probably planning it. So we love what you do for this community, and I've been to these Veterans Expo events in the past. They're fantastic, and it grows every year. I'm afraid that you guys are going to outgrow your venue, but for the veterans in this community, if you're a veteran, you may not even realize what you have, the needs that you have, but when you walk around there and you see those booths and tables and the things they talk about at this expo, you'll find there are some great things there for every single veteran in this community, whether they're active duty or retired or just served for a few years like myself. There's opportunities there for veterans, and I love what you do, your passion for veterans, and so I'd like to reverse that comment and say you are the greatest supporters of veterans in this community. I appreciate what you do and your service as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you both for coming today. The expo, I've been the last couple of years, and it's spectacular, and even people that aren't veterans like myself can get a lot out of it, meet a lot of people, learn a lot about services in the community that we can then pass on to veterans. So it's super important, and I think you covered it, Patty, talking about this is important for families of vets as well. So I just want to make sure that we really emphasize that this is a veteran-family type of event and not just a Veterans Expo, so.
You bet. And one last comment, I want to make sure that the veterans out there know, the Robert J. Dole VA Medical Center will be there with their mobile unit, ready to, and the regional office for the VA and the Vet Center, and they will all be there, ready to do private claims and look up your account and make sure you're connected. If you need a DD-214, they can help you get the process started, so please come and talk to them as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, resolutions reappointing members to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air in various positions.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, interim county counselor. I might point out that the next four agenda items involve trade boards for the Metropolitan Area Building Planning Department, Building Construction Department, excuse me, and that all of them are reappointments, but that each individual member of these boards are, we have drafted a separate resolution. But Item C, the first board that we're dealing with is the Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating. The recommended appointments by the Board of County Commissioners are Ron Love as a journeyman, heating and air conditioning mechanic, Roger Lowenstein, master air conditioning and warm air heating contractor, Frank Rasch, a public-at-large member who is appointed jointly by the city council and the Board of County Commissioners, and Joe Samia, a mechanical engineer appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. This is a seven-member board, three appointments by the Board of County Commissioners, three by the city council, one joint member, provides technical code review and recommendations to the city council and Sedgwick County Commission on matters involving the mechanical codes. All the resolutions for each of these gentlemen are in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you. You're recommending Charlie through Foxtrot in one motion? Yes. Thank you. I move to approve Charlie through Foxtrot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have County Clerk Kelly Arnold here. We have none of those individuals. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, resolution appointing Stephanie Jaeger to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Commissioners, this is the Board of Appeals of Plumbers and Gas Fitters. This is a seven-member board. Again, county commissioners have three appointments to this board.
I don't think that's...
Mr. Papun, we took through Foxtrot.
Oh, you've already, okay. I'm sorry, I misheard your question, Chairman. I was going to note the other board members of the different appeals boards. I'll be happy to do that, or we can just go ahead and skip.
Okay. That's entirely the world board. We're on...
Ms. Jaeger.
We're on golf. Jumped ahead on me here. I've got to start paying attention to these meetings. Okay. This is a resolution to the Mental Health Advisory Board, a 15-member board.
Each commissioner's have three appointments. This is Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment to this board. He's recommending the appointment of Stephanie Jaeger. This would be a four-year appointment. Resolution's in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not see Ms. Jaeger out in the audience, but just really appreciated her willingness to serve on this board. She is a strong advocate for mental health issues, and I would like to note that last month I appointed Dalton Glasscock as my other appointee, and he is the chair of the Republican Party of Sedgwick County. Mrs. Jaeger's husband is the chair of the Democratic Party of Sedgwick County, so some good bipartisan support that really focuses on the fact that mental health and what we're trying to do at the county isn't a partisan issue, but it's a people issue. And so I appreciate Mrs. Jaeger's energy and passion about mental health and desire to serve. And with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept that appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And I do not believe she's here. Go to item hotel. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, resolution appointing Sheriff Jeff Easter as the chairman of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Mr. Papun.
Yeah, Commissioners, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is a board that deals with a number of criminal justice matters in this community. There are a lot of judicial appointments, law enforcement appointments. Of course, Jeff Easter is the top law enforcement officer in the county, has a regular appointment to this board, but this resolution provides that when there's a vacancy that the Board of County Commissioners will approve the chairman, the chairperson of this board. In this particular case, we had Judge Fleetwood recently retiring, who was a former chairman, and this resolution is appointing Sheriff Jeff Easter to be the chairman of the CJCC. Resolution's in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. I move that we appoint Sheriff Easter to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure it's clear, he's already on the council. This is appointing him as chairman of the council.
Yeah, very good. Any further discussion? All right, our motion is to appoint Jeff Easter as the chairman of CJCC. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item I, approval of the agreement with the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County Fire District Number One for the Wichita-Sedgwick County Integrated Care Team ICT-1.
Morning, Dr. Gallagher. Morning, Chief Snow. Chief Williams.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Gallagher, I'm the EMS System Medical Director for Sedgwick County and the City of Wichita. I'm joined this morning by Fire Chief Tammy Snow from the Wichita Fire Department, Chief Doug Williams from Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, as well as EMS Director Dennis Mock. And we come to you together in solidarity to present this request for approval of the MOU for the new Integrated Care Plan, Integrated Care Team, that we will begin piloting with your approval next week. The MOU is fairly straightforward and outlines what the different agencies will be bringing to the table for personnel and resource. And on paper, it represents an agreement between the city and county, but in concept, it represents much more than that. It represents us coming together to serve a population that we think has been underserved and that we can do better. So while we've certainly entertained any questions about the MOU itself, we would also welcome any comments that you have from the bench about the program itself as we get ready to embark on this new, unexplored territory for us.
Thank you. Chief Snow, did you have anything you'd like to comment this morning?
Just very excited about the program and kicking it off, and just want to reiterate what Dr. Gallagher said in fact, in fact that this is an opportunity to serve a portion of our community that has truly been underserved for quite a period of time, and really excited about the impact that this new team will make.
Thank you for being here. Chief Williams, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. The fire district looked at it from the standpoint that this is our opportunity to partner with the other agencies and also provide the same echo Chief Snow and Dr. Gallagher to provide services to a bit of the community that's underserved and needs assistance.
And Director of EMS, Dennis Mock, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, just that we believe this will be a benefit to the community and appreciate your support.
Okay, short and sweet. Thank you.
Procedure, procedurally, sir, this has already been approved by both the legal departments of the city and the county, and was voted on by the city council last week.
Very good. Well, that's a point that I was going to make, that the city council did just approve this recently, and it's another partnership that we have with the City of Wichita that brings us closer together and shows cooperation. Just a few years ago, I, there was kind of a wall down central, and today, I, there is no wall. We work...
There's a tunnel.
There's a tunnel, and it's open. The spirit of cooperation between the two organizations is fantastic. I don't know that we've worked this well together in quite some time, but this program is one that we took a look at, actually, Dr. Gallagher and Malachi and a few other folks took a look at in other communities and saw how did it benefited our community and how that we could serve with a social worker and someone that's medically qualified and someone that is a peace officer, working to take care of a problem that could be worked at a level that needed to be worked at rather than escalate to running large fire trucks out, taking out police officers in police vehicles and so forth. So this is actually, in the long term, going to save resources in our community because we're providing every resource that we need. If it needs to be escalated above that, then we can call for an ambulance, or we can call for a fire truck, or whatever else that we need to do. But this one group of people, this integrated care team, is designed to be able to solve many problems that our community is facing today, and we appreciate the foresight to come up with an idea like this, and we appreciate Chief Snow providing the vehicle that we're going to be using for this very first test. The program is slated right now for 90 days. We're going to take a look at it at 30 days, at 60 days, to see if there's any tweaks that we need to make along the way during those periods of time, and I think that what we're going to see as we go into the end of the test period, that this is something that was vitally needed for a long time in our community. I sincerely appreciate the people that come up with ideas like this to help our citizens. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I just kind of want to echo that.
I just kind of want to echo that. When Malachi first talked to me about this program, he was so excited, and I think the innovation that we're seeing with this program in our community could be echoed in all of the things that we do. Seeing the success in other communities and bringing them to our community, I think, is what, as leaders, we're supposed to be doing. So I really appreciate the step that you guys took to kind of get this going, because sometimes change isn't always easy, right? So, I mean, mental health is so important to me, and I think that this is one step in addition to our mental health coalition, and hopefully some of the other things that maybe Calm Care is going to be, hopefully, able to accomplish, that we can really combat our mental health crisis in this community. I mean, somebody dies by suicide one every four days, and hopefully, with the help of you guys understanding how to handle individuals, maybe we can be there at the moment when someone needs us the most. So I really appreciate the innovation. I'm so sorry I wasn't able to make it to any of those meetings, but I kind of drank the Kool-Aid, and I was already on board. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the public, this clearly serves our community, the citizens in need much better, from my opinion. I was privileged to be on this committee even when I was still at the city council, and then it morphed into I represented here at the county at these meetings. And I think not only serving the public was the goal, but to watch as a... I don't run any of the departments, but to watch these four individual leaders from various agencies, along with our Police Department of Wichita, the Sheriff's Department of Sedgwick County, 911, Calm Care, who else am I missing? That's...
You got it.
I got it. So there's eight very government agencies in one room, working for months to try to come up with... And I witnessed a spirit of common goal and wanting to get there, and nobody was measuring by who's doing more than the other. It was, as an elected official in the community, it was a joy to be a part of and to watch, and I think this is what our community should be about in a number of ways, but this is going to be a big step. I sincerely congratulate what you all have accomplished and wish us the luck.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. Dr. Gallagher, thank you for the presentation today. I was fortunate enough to watch the one last week that Chief Snow did at the city of Wichita. It's just super exciting watching everybody work together, and especially seeing Chief Snow and Chief Williams here standing side by side just really shows the commitment that the entire community has visually, and obviously, all the people that we have on the ground that are going to implement this. I'm very optimistic that this is going to be a great endeavor, and that hopefully, after this pilot program, it will be a permanent fixture for Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita going forward. So thank you all for your effort and passing it along to your staff and your teams that are going to be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we make a motion, a couple of things. First of all, we've got a kind of a ribbon cutting today at 2:30 over at OMD, so we hope press comes over to the ribbon cutting, and they can answer any questions that the press may have at that point in time. Are we still having some ride-alongs on Friday? If they want to, if the press wants to sign up for ride-alongs on Friday during the training?
Yes, we have opportunity for anyone from the media who's interested to have a guided experience, to follow the team around in real-world experience.
Good. So again, the press needs to sign up for slots in that, and we hope that the press, we do have a little bit of press here, not too much, but I hope they do hear, the rest of them that aren't here today, hear that there's an opportunity for that also. So we look forward to this afternoon at 2:30 over to Officer Medical Director's location, and then we look forward to Friday, having the press see what you're really doing. With that, I make a motion, we approve the contract and authorize me to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Well, thank you all for being here. I haven't seen this many stars and bars since I retired from the Air Force.
Thank you, sir. Always a pleasure.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, public hearing regarding the 2020 Sedgwick County budget.
Morning, Dom.
Morning, Chairman and Commission. This morning is the first public hearing regarding the 2020 budget recommendation. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals $437,312,854. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $149,196,923, which is approximately equivalent to $29.359, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the... First of all, before we do that, does anyone have any questions for the manager before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the 2020 budget. I do have a number of folks that have signed up to speak on the public agenda today, and we will go in order. So, and this time, Jeff, now we'll put you back up. Just state your name for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman Dennis and other members of the commission. I'm here in my capacity as the new chairman of the Board of Exploration Place, one of the jewels of our city and county, and I just want to thank the commission for your support. Approximately 25 years ago, the leaders of our county had the grand vision of having a world-class education and science center in Sedgwick County, and as we roll the clock forward approximately 25 years, we now have exactly that incredible facility that educates our children. The Exploration Place is just a crown jewel of the quality of life in our city, in our workforce development. We're particularly focused on STEM education for science, technology, engineering, and math, that will feed the future workforce of our community. Very, very important to engage young children and get them interested in science and technology. And it's not just a place to go for entertainment and education, but it's also an outreach and education program. In fact, last year, approximately 93,000 children participated in camps and other educational programs. In addition, we had over 330,000 individuals come to Exploration Place and look at exhibits or participate in educational programs. And after 20 years of existence, we just had our 4,000,000th visitor this last year, so a great milestone there. We've also had national recognition in terms of some of the programs and exhibits. For example, the Design, Build, Fly exhibit is one of the premier exhibits in the country and has received national awards. And I just wanted to come here as we look at the budget and thank the commissioners for your continued support. We know that we have a five-year agreement with the county in terms of funding, but I think it's always appropriate to thank you, and if anyone hasn't been out to Exploration Place recently, we hope you'll be there and come enjoy all that it has to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it today. Thanks for your comments. Next individual signed up, Jim Burgess. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Jim Burgess. I live in Derby. As a matter of disclosure, I need to tell you that I am on the advisory board of the Derby Senior Center and that I am also on the advisory council on aging for Sedgwick County. Today, I want to speak on a couple of items on the aging budget. I am speaking for myself, not in an official capacity. I do appreciate that the 2020 budget includes a minor increase for programs for four senior centers and the funding for a study for senior nutrition programs in rural areas of Sedgwick County. These are deserving and necessary programs. It does puzzle me, however, why you chose not to include additional funding that was requested in the amount of $31,798 for Meals on Wheels in Wichita, when there are people in the city who cannot be served due to lack of funding. Last year, senior nutrition was the number-one priority of the Sedgwick County Commission. Are the elderly, needful elderly, less important this year than they were last year? Further, there was a supplemental request for $34,202 to fund Meals on Wheels for disabled people who are and have been on a waiting list for some time. Is it not important to the commissioners that disabled people have an opportunity to have regular meals also? I guess I fail to understand your priorities in this area. Sedgwick County has a rapidly increasing number of people who are elderly and/or disabled with limited resources. It would seem to me that these people would be priority to the Sedgwick County commissioners. In addition, there was a supplemental request submitted for additional funding. I had $46,800. I understand that's been revised to something around $18,000 for the Carney Center for Posture Seating Program. That one, the funding was to provide repair technician to repair customized wheelchairs for severely disabled people. You'll have an opportunity to hear from them shortly. At the present time, there's over a 60-day wait to get customized wheelchairs repaired due to lack of an additional repair technician. Without the specialized chairs, these individuals are homebound and sometimes bedbound until their chairs are repaired. 60 days is a long time to wait for that kind of service. Most of these people are trying to be productive, either in school or performing a job. Without these chairs, they can do neither. This funding is critical to those people. If the commission won't fund the repairs, who will? For some reason, Sedgwick County and the Sedgwick County Commissioners have been reticent to increased funding for seniors and for the disabled in recent years. As you all know, funding has been flat for a long time. I feel like it's time for the Sedgwick County Commissioners to step up and fund some of the needs of us more vulnerable citizens, and remember that almost all senior citizens are taxpayers, as are the disabled, and almost all of them vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Next speaker is Laurel Alkar.
Good morning. I'm Laurel Alkar with Senior Services, Inc. of Wichita. Our mission is to keep seniors at home for as long as possible. I first want to thank the Sedgwick County Commissioners for continuing to fund aging services. You are one of the few organizations in Wichita that have invested in our seniors for many years. You continue to support us by allowing us and others to serve our most vulnerable population, and for that, again, I thank you. I'm here today to speak to our request for additional money for our Meals on Wheels funding in both our aging meal levy that serves those 60-plus and for the physical disability program that serves those under 60. Both of those groups suffer from a multitude of chronic conditions that limit their mobility as well as their ability to prepare meals. Both groups also have little, if any, support on a daily basis. I would have loved to have gotten some of our clients up here, but most are not mobile, and that would have been very difficult. In the aging meal levy, we are requesting an increase of $31,798 to alleviate the waiting list by 20 people. We normally have 30 to 40 on our aging waiting list. That would allow us to feed another 20 seniors a year. As I said, the waiting list is between 30 and 40, and currently, many wait at least three weeks before they are assessed. And this is just due to a shortage of staff who are able to assess. Those additional dollars would allow us to hire one part-time assessor and also to cover $11,788 to cover most of the additional 5,200 meals that we would be delivering to those 20 people. Many people are not aware that we also serve those under 60 with the physical disability meal levy funds. We're requesting $34,202 in additional funding to reduce that PD waiting list by 40 of those clients. And that would, again, allow us to add another part-time assessor and to cover part of the food costs that it would take to feed those 40 for one year. Most of our mental health clients are self-referred, but they also come through Calm Care, the VA, home health agencies, and the Medicaid program. The typical PD client is in their early to late 50s, and many are not ambulatory. Our youngest client, however, currently is 31 years old. A lot have suffered strokes and deal with depression. They tend to be very low-income, and their living quarters are some of the worst that we see on our routes. Many suffer from cancer, diabetes, and heart problems. There are vets living with effects of Agent Orange, and we have others who have been exposed to asbestos. Many are on dialysis, and others suffer from COPD, rheumatoid arthritis, and memory loss. We currently serve ADPD clients, and most of those people stay on that program. There are no other options for these people, and that's why our waiting list is years-long. And so if I were to choose one of these programs, I would say the PD clients have so very little and live the day-to-day with just us really checking on them, and I think they deserve some attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here.
Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Next is Patrick Jonas. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, I'm Pat Jonas, president of the Durable Policy Research Foundation here in Wichita, and I want to thank the Department of Aging, the commission. We've had a wonderful partnership over the years. But specifically for our wheelchair and seating program, we really could use some additional assistance. It sounds like protocol, how you get there, I'm not sure, and I don't want to get into the middle of how that's done. However, we had been approached, and Mr. Burgess has been a wonderful advocate of ours and others, on the PD advisory committee if there was a specific need that we had. And one of the biggest issues is we'll see close to 800 clients a year from around the state. 54% of those clients come from Sedgwick County. We have some funding from the PD meal levy pot, and we have some money from the CDDO, but 40% come from the PD meal levy pot, 14% from what would be categorized as CDDO, but these are people with very significant disabilities that would not be treated in like a durable medical equipment environment. So there's two clinics in the state that are certified. One is at Children's Mercy, it's way up in Kansas City area, and the other is here in Wichita. And because we serve South Central, Southeast, Western Kansas, there's a lot of folks that come in, and we get backlog big time. And the idea that Mr. Burgess had brought to us is that if there was some efficiency you could bring to this program, what would it be? And it would be to hire a full-time technician that could assist in getting more people through the system so we could get folks scheduled earlier. And there's some people here from our organization that are going to speak a little bit more about that. However, to close, we would request that the commission consider funding 40% of that new tech position, which would be $18,720 be added to our PD pot, which has been flat-funded for the last seven years. We appreciate flat funding, we appreciate all kinds of funding, but if there would be some consideration for an increase, we would be very grateful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. The next speaker is David Kemp. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
I am David Kemp, and I'm the director of the posture seating program at CPRF. And I want to thank you guys for your past support and echo what Mr. Jonas said. We've been great partners. I just, my purpose here is to let you know that the wheelchairs and seating aren't the type of wheelchairs and seating that you would see out in most places. Most wheelchairs for people are steel chairs, and they're pulled out, and they take you from point A to point B, and then you get up and get out of them. The clients that we see who are here today spend all day, every day, in the chairs, so the chairs are very specialized, and they're also very expensive, and they're difficult to fund through insurance. So these chairs, a process to be able to get a chair, either get it or get it brand-new, requires a therapist, it requires a durable medical equipment provider, it requires an entire team to be able to justify and get the insurance. Now, that process, from the moment a therapist sees a client to the moment a chair is delivered, best-case scenario, best-case scenario is 90 days. So if we're at 45 or 50 days just to be able to get into our facility, added to that 90 days, best-case scenario, you're looking at a painful process, and we're adding pain to it. So in that respect, we're hoping to lessen the amount of time to get into the Carney Center. And what we want to do with the technician is to let you know that a lot of the durable medical equipment providers aren't able to come and make the appointments when we need them to. We only have two that service us this in our county. So not to get too much into the weeds, but an experienced technician, which we have two, would be moved into a slot to act like a durable medical equipment provider when we have cancellations, and also, it could just speed up the process and give us more flexibility. So that's what we're hoping to do, is just to make a very painful process less painful. So, do you have any questions?
I don't see any questions. Thank you very much for being here. Next speaker is David Sierra.
My name is David Sierra. I work for Durable Policy Research Foundation as patient service coordinator... I work for Durable Policy Research Foundation as Patient Service Coordinator and Schedular. So my role as a Schedular, when I have to schedule evaluations for patients that come in, again, as you heard, I schedule forty-five, fifty days in advance, and that adds to the pain. And then, for example, as a, and the example I had this morning was that when a child goes to school and they're seen after a long summer break by the school therapist, they realize that the wheelchair is no longer fitting the child appropriately. So if that is an issue already going into school, and then they'll be, you know, forty days out, that that student will be going to school with a wheelchair that doesn't fit him properly, well, then the child's parents are obviously upset with that. And I've had some issues before where they've even had a few choice words with me, and that just adds to the stress of trying to calm the parent down, because they have no other place to go here in Wichita other than our facility. So just wanted to make that as an example. So, thank you.
Very good. Thanks for being here today. The next speaker is Lena Benning, I believe. Please state your name for the record.
Lena Benning. I'm here in support of getting extra help at the Carney Center because I have to go to work every day to, I use my chair to get to work. So when I don't have my chair, I have to stay home because this is the only chair I have. I don't have any backup chair. So, no manual. This is all I have.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for being here.
I appreciate your support.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this issue today, but if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on the budget issue, now would be an opportunity. Seeing no one, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And we will be having another public hearing coming up in the evening, and then on August the seventh is when we will pass the final budget. So we will be listening from citizens. Also, the budget will be presented at my Citizens Advisory Board here on the twenty-ninth. So anyone that is in District Three is welcome to attend that also. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the comments made this morning, I would like it if staff would be willing to respond to some of these funding requests and provide us some rationale as to why these are not included in the base budget. So if there's reasons why, I'd like to understand what the thought process is, why these things were not included. And I know these requests were known a while back, but they're not included in the budget. So if you could help me with that, I would appreciate that. Between now and the next public hearing, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Hey, I don't see anything else on this item, and we have closed the public hearing. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, Consideration of a Grant Renewal in the Amount of Three Million Two Hundred Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Five Dollars for the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services Fiscal Year 2020 Area Plan.
Morning, Annette.
Morning, Commissioner, Senator Graham, Department on Aging. What I bring before you today is our annual area plan. It is for the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging. We have been, has been receiving federal funding since nineteen eighty, when the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging was moved under and has become administered by the Sedgwick County Commission. The Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services requires all eleven area agencies on aging Kansas to submit an area plan that outlines how federal funds for the planning and service area will be expected to meet the needs specific to the region. So our CPA consists of Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick Counties, and that's what the federal and state dollars that come through Kansas Department of Aging and Disability for, are to serve seniors and caregivers in all three counties. The CPA Advisory Council is made up of members from all three Department on Aging Advisory Councils from across the region. They did review and approve the fiscal year 2020 area plan on May fifteenth, twenty nineteen. At that same meeting, a public hearing was held. The Harvey County Board of County Commissioners and the Butler County Board of County Commissioners have reviewed the plan and authorized the Sedgwick County Chairman to sign the area plan. The area plan will fund the following programs in fiscal year 2020, and this is how the federal government and the State Department on Aging and Disabilities, they designate different titles. So under Title III, that is Administration, ninety-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Under Title III-B, which is Supporting Community Services, there are four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Title III-C-I is the Congregate Nutrition Program. That's like at senior centers, senior-focused housing, community locations. The federal dollars for that are six-hundred-and-four-thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. State dollars are twenty-four thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. And then there's Nutrition Service Incentive Program Funding of seventy-seven thousand twenty-five dollars. III-C-II is the Home Delivered, often referred to as Meals on Wheels. Federal dollars for that program, five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. State dollars, eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand eight-hundred-and-seven. And for the Nutrition Services Incentive Program, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Title III-D is the Health Promotion and Disease Prevention, forty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. And Title III-E is the Family Caregiver Support Program at two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand and thirty-four dollars. This is an estimated budget as the 2020 federal budget has not been established yet, so we're using current-year budget numbers, as advised by the state. Under each of those programs, I will just tell you that there is a definition of services that can be provided under each of those titles. So we can, we have to follow those definitions, and we put out a request for proposals to providers. We make public notice of that, and providers submit applications, requests, to request funding. And then those are reviewed, and within that budget, those are then taken back to staff review that, and then we take that to the Advisory Council for final review and recommendation, which I bring. The federal fiscal year for this is October first, twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth of 2020. So a total grant of three million two hundred thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. There is required match, so for each service and each program, except for the National Family Caregiver Program, there is a required match that the federal establishes. So out of that, ninety-two thousand five-hundred-and-forty-three thousand will be the Sedgwick County responsibility. The remaining one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars is jointly provided by Butler and Harvey County and providers that are providers under this service. So out of this, the budget authority has been already included for the remainder of 2019 and is included in our budget request for the Department for 2020. Under each program, there is expected outcomes. We have staff that oversee this and that review all of the outcomes and get reports from them, and we submit data to the state. This budget, once approved, will go to the state, and the state has final approval. So sometimes when they review it, they might ask for a few changes, or they have some feedback on that. But all of this is subject to the state approval once submitted. So I would be happy to answer any questions, and if no questions, then I would request that you sign the document.
Thank you, Annette. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Did you say that your plan, the strategic plan that you have put together, when was that going to be out?
We have, we're waiting for the WSU to finalize that. We have submitted all the materials. So hopefully this week, they should have that finalized.
Okay, and that will be shared, Howell?
We will be bringing that in front of the Commission.
Like a staff meeting or individual staff meeting?
Probably do the staff meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Don't see any other questions. I move that we approve the new area plan, authorize me to sign.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Annette. Next item, please.
Item L, Contribution of One Hundred Thousand Dollars to the Capital Campaign for KVC Health Systems' New Acute Care Children's Psychiatric Hospital in Wichita.
Morning, Brent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, Economic Development Tax System Director with the Division of Finance. The item before you is a one-hundred-thousand-dollar funding request for the Hope Lives Campaign for KVC Health Systems. KVC Health Systems is a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization. They're a national leader in behavioral health care. They currently operate three acute care children's psychiatric hospitals in the state of Kansas. In addition to the hospitals in Kansas City and in Hayes, which annually serve over thirty-four-hundred children, KVC opened just last week a new Wichita Children's Hospital. The new fifty-four-bed hospital is going to serve approximately eight hundred young people between the ages of six and eighteen from this region who are now forced to travel to Kansas City or occasionally to Hayes to receive emergency treatment when they're experiencing a psychiatric crisis and are struggling with depression, anxiety, and are often suicidal. The new hospital, which actually opened its doors on July fifteenth, is located at fifteen-oh-five West Twenty-first Street North, and it fills a gap in the continuum of behavioral health care provided locally. It'll significantly reduce the burden on families that they experience during this traumatic time. To get this facility constructed in Wichita, KVC embarked upon a seven-million-dollar capital campaign. Today, they're here seeking one-time funding support from Sedgwick County. They're also seeking the support from the city of Wichita to help complete paying for the hospital construction. They've reported that the final capital investment that they're making to open this hospital is about eight and a half million dollars. Once in operation, this hospital, like the ones in Kansas City and Hayes, are self-sufficient, so there will not be a further request for funding. And while it's not yet been scheduled, the city council's going to hear this same request on a future meeting within the next few weeks. So funding for the county contribution can be facilitated by transferring a hundred-thousand dollars from our operating reserves to the Community Development, Community Program Fund, and we would recommend approval of the hundred-thousand-dollar county contribution to the Hope Lives Campaign for KVC Health Systems Wichita Children's Hospital. We have some representatives from KVC that I think want to address you as well, but if you have, and I'll stand for questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Brent? I don't see any at this time, and we do have Michelle Lawrence here. Would you like to speak this morning?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I also am joined by Justin White, who is the new Executive Director of our hospital. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us to be here this morning to share an update with you. We, I also would like to thank three key leaders who've been involved in helping us share the project with leaders in Sedgwick County, and they include District Attorney Mark Bennett and Jill Docking and Patrick Goble, who's the President with Star Lumber. They believe strongly in investing in this early intervention for children in psychiatric crisis, who are in acute crisis, and being able to make a difference in these children's lives and their families' lives by initially stabilizing them, but then being able to help build their resilience and engaging their families in that recovery and healing process. We, we continue to receive referrals, and so we continue to work with our community partners. That includes many, but Calm Care and Via Christi, and we serve children who are between the ages of six and eighteen. And I would like to invite Justin, if I may, to share with you just a little bit about where we are today and how many children we're serving. Would that be okay?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Dennis, Commissioners. Within seven days of opening, we've served a total of ten kiddos. These are ten individuals that have come to us with suicide of isolation, self-harm, physical aggression to themselves, others severe property destruction. As of today, we have successfully discharged two of those ten. We anticipate to successfully discharge another two today. If you understand the history of KVC hospitals, we operate, this will be our third acute care children's hospital in the state of Kansas. Prior to us opening, the youth in the Wichita community had to travel roughly two and a half, three hours to receive immediate care. Last year alone, roughly thirty percent of the children served in Kansas City were from the Wichita region. So we're excited to be a part of the Wichita community. We have gotten off to a very great start of serving those locally and look forward to increasing our senses as we get more acclimated to a new facility, but also gearing up staff with the training to ensure that we provide proper care on a twenty-four-hour basis.
Well, thanks, sir, for being here. We sincerely appreciate it this morning. And Michelle, thank you for being here also. I know that the Commissioners had an opportunity to tour the facility. I think I saw every one of the Commissioners over there during the ribbon cutting. When we take six hundred children from our community and we send them as far as Kansas City or Hayes, and a lot of times, the parents have a job back here and have to stay back behind, and when you have a child that is in crisis, and you take them to another facility and then leave them and have to leave, I can't imagine the heartache that those parents would be observing at that time. This is something that is needed in our community, and we appreciate you all stepping up to the plate and making this happen, as these are our kids that are in crisis, that need help, that still need their support systems in place in the community, and this is an opportunity to do that. We want to thank you very much. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both for being here today. I am excited about this for a couple of different reasons. One, because you took a building in my district and you rehabbed it. That was kind of an eyesore, and you made it new again. Two, because of all the children that are impacted, you know, I, there's a quote by Frederick Douglass that says, "It's easier to build children than repair broken men." And while he said that at a time of slavery, I think that it really is, I think it's really prevalent today, because all of the children in our community, they face the trauma, and hopefully, we can overcome that so that when they do become adults, they can get past those things that have bothered them before. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing. I was really impressed with your facility. I hope, I don't know any children that go there. I really, I really do. But I understand the need is great, and I'm excited that it's in my district. And so let me know if there's anything I can do, because I know a lot of kids in this community, and I just, I'm excited that there's an opportunity for them to stay here and get help so their families don't have to travel to see them get better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other comments. I appreciate Brent bringing this to us today. It is his birthday, by the way, so we want to wish Brent a very happy birthday. And Commissioner Cruz, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contribution to KVC Health Systems' Capital Campaign.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item M, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. On July eighteenth, our meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, we discussed four items, and we're seeking your approval for them. Our first item is the Prevention Secondary Intervention Services for the Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept the proposal and execute a service provider agreement with Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas. Pardon me. This is in the amount of sixty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Item number two, On-Call Support for the SAP Business by Design for Enterprise Resource Planning. This recommendation is to accept the best proposal for on-call support for this SAP Business by Design from Phoenix Business Incorporated. They're doing business as Phoenix Business Consulting, and this will be for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the On-Call Remodel Services for Facility Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the low bids from Van Asdell LLC and Encore Construction LLC at the rates listed, and we'll establish contract pricing for two years with two one-year options to renew. Our final item, item number four, Security System Camera Upgrade Facility Project Our final item, item number four, Security System Camera Upgrade Facility Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated. They're doing business as Comtech Security LLC for $917,380. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you. I don't see any questions at all for you this morning, so I move that we approve the recommendations of Board and Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, Tom Stoles with County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items N through Q this morning.
Thank you. I move to approve November through Quebec. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, second? Do we have a second anywhere?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Old Business, Item R, Consideration of a Previous Motion to Approve an Investigation by the County Commission.
Morning, Mr. Papoon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Mike Papoon, interim County Counselor. As just mentioned, this is a follow-up item from an item that was on the agenda last fall, and to begin with, I'll give you a little background of what has happened. There was an off-agenda item at the Board of County Commissioner meeting on October 24th of 2018, introduced by the Chairman, Chairman Dennis, to address, quote, "An open, external, transparent analysis of county leadership." There was some discussion on this matter, and Commissioner Unruh, former Commissioner Unruh, moved to proceed with an independent review of county leadership to be conducted by outside counsel. Commissioner, former Commissioner Randzow at that time made a substitute motion to include, quote, "An investigation into unethical behavior by Commissioners over the last two years and the toxic environment that has resulted in the county." Finally, after further discussion, Commissioner O'Donnell moved to proceed with the initial scope of the investigation, and then expand the scope to the commission once the initial scope was concluded. And this motion passed three to two, with Commissioners Randzow and Commissioners Howe voting against the motion. Following this meeting, an attorney was engaged in doing an investigation of upper management, and this investigation took approximately three weeks, is conducted by Attorney Stephanie Scheck, and she interviewed, spent about 200 hours, interviewed 47 people, and the cost of this investigation was approximately $89,000, and there have been previous court requests in which the county has responded to, giving the cost of this investigation. From that moment, the county, of course, the County Commission, as you remember back in the fall of 2018, was involved in a number of other matters as well. We engaged in settlement agreements with a former county counselor, entered into a settlement agreement with former county manager, and, but still during this time, Chairman Dennis and former Commissioner Randzow met and did come up with a proposed scope of the investigation, which was later then presented in a County Commission staff meeting on January the 8th, 2019, which would have been the last County Commission meeting for the former County Commission, and just prior to, of course, Commissioners Cruz and Commissioner Meitzner coming onboard the County Commission. It's also noteworthy, if I haven't mentioned it, that it was on November 14th of last year, for the first time, 2018, in 2018, that this board adopted, based largely on what the County Commissioners Association has provided, an ethics code, a Code of Professional Conduct, and that was approved by the County Commission. At the staff meeting in January 8th, I presented a similar timeline and some of the issues that are involved in this investigation, and I believe, there was some discussion at that time, a particular Commissioner Howell, I believe, raised some considerations about the cost, and also, I think, brought up what I thought was a fairly cogent question at the time, in which he asked, towards the end of his comments, what is the point of this investigation? And I think these are good questions, and at that time, the chairman ended up basically directing staff, in particular, the county counselor, to come back with some recommendations at a later time. And of course, seven months has transpired since that earlier staff meeting, and no recommendation. We've just left that former action by the Board of County Commissioners sitting, and so that we want to, once again, address some of these issues. Some of the transition, though, that was going on at the time, of course, following up the attorney, or the management analysis, there was, of course, some transition with county leadership. We weathered at the time some FBI investigations based upon whistleblower allegations from the former county manager. As of this time, we have no reason to believe that there's any active investigation going on, anything further with regard to those allegations. And also, at the time, there was a complaint filed by one county commissioner on potential violations of Kansas Open Meeting Act, violations by some other Commissioners, and that investigation was finally completed by the District Attorney's Office, and I will say, District Attorney Mark Bennett and his staff did a very thorough investigation from last fall until July, looking into possible meeting, open meetings violations, and in summary, quote, in his report, the summary stated in quote, "This investigation did not yield evidence sufficient to establish any of the suspected violations of coma occurred." So we've completed all of these investigations, which I believe was a large part of what the scope of at least former Commissioner Randzow included, but at this time, we need to address some of the ongoing questions of what this commission wants to do. Does this commission want to conduct an investigation essentially based upon the action of a former county commission? We need to address the issue of cost. How much should the county be spending on this investigation? If I were to recommend going forward in this regard, I would say probably, once again, using outside counsel. It's an investigation that's likely going to take at least 100 to 150 hours of investigation, won't reach nearly the cost of the former investigation, but we're probably still looking at $30,000, $40,000 to hire somebody to conduct this investigation. Another issue is who should be interviewed. Several of the key people involved in the investigation are no longer in the state, may not be readily available to be interviewed. We have to address issues such as how cooperative are staff going to be in this investigation, and are we going to require county staff, management staff, to participate in such an investigation? And in preparation of this meeting, I also went back and looked over the scope that was originally arrived at by Chairman Dennis and former County Commissioner Randzow, and looking at that scope, the chairman came up with a number of things to investigate that were largely based upon, I think, the County Code of Ethics that was adopted in November, but keep in mind that all of the actions that we were investigating were prior to adopting Code of Ethics. Commissioner Randzow's concerns, I think, were largely addressed by the actions of the, by the investigations conducted by the District Attorney and the FBI, and as we're aware, there's been no significant action taken from those investigations. So come to you today, in summary, asking you, if you want a recommendation from me, I would probably, I would recommend that we would come back to the board as a whole with a scope, beginning with the scope of the investigation arrived at by the chairman and Commissioner Randzow, and come up with a scope of investigation, and then I would like some direction on how much this commission is interested in spending on an investigation following that scope. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and look to the will of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I don't see any questions whatsoever from the board at this point in time. Commissioner Meitzner?
So if we wanted to go forward, we would have to provide a scope, but being it's last year, and it was an effort, all the things that you just transcribed for us, so I would be interested in making a motion for this to be dropped and not go forward any further. What would my, if I was going to make a motion like that, how would I word that? Would I word it to say the previous actions of...
I can help you with the motion, Commissioner Meitzner. You could move to, with respect to the action taken Board of County Commissioner on October 24th, 2018, to conduct an investigation into county commissioners that you, this time, nullify that action.
Okay, but is that also from the January 8th?
The January 8th, no official action was taken in the staff meeting on January 8th. It was mostly just a review of the matter, and we very seldom, if ever, take action at Board of County Commission Staff Meeting, so, no, it would just, the official action needs to nullify the action taken back in October by the previous county commission.
Okay, so based on the FBI and the DA's investigation where no action was found, I would like to make a motion that would nullify the October 24th, 2018 county leadership investigation.
Well, we did the county leadership investigation, sir. It'd be, we would say, to nullify the investigation into unethical behavior by the county commission.
Okay, amend that for the commission instead of the leadership.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I just want to say, I'm interested in moving forward. I think that we, I have seen, and I have been impressed by staff, I don't want to spend any more money on an investigation of Commissioners who are no longer here, and that's the reason why I second this motion.
Thank you. I will support the motion. Thankfully, Sedgwick County has really passed a very difficult year last year, a chapter. We're doing great things with our leadership, and the leadership is focused on providing important services to our citizens in the community. It was important last fall that we listened to our citizens and that we listened to our staff. We did have an objective HR attorney take a look at that, and as Mr. Papoon said, those investigations are complete. As far as I know, there are no investigations undergoing at the current time. I want to thank the District Attorney also for conducting a very thorough investigation. I'm glad that we're ready to move forward and remain focused on both our staff of great folks that are working for our citizens every day, and stay focused on the 500,000 citizens in Sedgwick County. Therefore, I am very pleased that we are moving forward at this time. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoon, you're still on.
I don't have any legislative issues at this time, Mr. Chairman.
That's very good. Other, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to mention, and I'm so sorry that I didn't mention it while Queen Mother was here, but I was nervous about saying her name, so I just kind of spaced it. But I was really impressed with the presentation last night at T-CAM, and I would encourage you guys to, if you haven't been over to the Kansas African American Museum, they are doing some really great things over there. They have an exhibit up right now that is on the basis, or what is it? Tim, what is it called? Oh, putting you on the spot.
Sorry.
What is it? It's, why am I...
There are two. One is Kansas to Africa, Africa to Kansas, and then Race in Our Time, I think, maybe is the name of it.
Oh, my gosh, I should have been more prepared to say it, but get over there and check it out. The other thing is, former Mayor Carl Brewer was there last night, and he, in 2012, they had the previous Queen Mother who had presented, she came over. The interesting thing was, though, that Carl has traced his roots back to Ghana, and that's why that that city was selected. So I think it's really kind of, it's cool that we are reaching out across the nation and across the world to develop sister cities with other countries. So I just, I'm sorry that I didn't say that earlier, but, you know, like I said, I was nervous, and I'm new to this, so, you know, once I get my feet under me, it'll be more. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other Commissioners have anything for other? I just have a couple of things then. First of all, advanced voting is open. I did vote yesterday. It's very, very easy, and believe it or not, it is very, very short, because I had one thing to vote on yesterday, so it didn't take me very much time. I know that some people will have a school board, but I didn't have a school board, but please vote and exercise your citizen responsibilities here in the great country that we have. The next thing that I'd like to discuss is that our zoo has First Responders Saturday coming up, and so all the first responders get in free to the zoo Saturday. Make sure you take your families, all of our first responders, and enjoy the zoo, so that we can honor your service. Another thing about the zoo to be aware of, you know, that they're getting ready to put in a brand-new entrance on the zoo, and as a result, they're going to start closing the existing entrance, so that they can do that. And so there's going to be an alternate entrance way over on the west side, past the theater that you go in, the Cargill Theater, and you'll actually exit back through that area. So the existing area is going to be closed in the near future. Make sure that when you go, now you're probably going to want to park further to the west as you go into the zoo. I also want to remind everyone that ICT1, we're having ribbon cutting today at 2:30 over at Officer Medical Director. We hope to see a lot of folks there, especially the press. And Friday, there's a ride-along capability for the press to see firsthand what ICT1 is all about. And finally, I want to remind everyone that my District Advisory Board meeting has been changed, and it's now next Monday night at 7:00 at the Goddard School District Maintenance Office. They've got a conference center out there, and the two topics that we're going to discuss at that time are the budget and the solar-wind discussions that we're going to be making a decision on next month. In addition, I am looking for one citizen from out in the western, far western part of the county. I have one opening on the District Advisory Board, so if anyone would like to serve on that, and they also live far west, because I don't really have that area represented very well, so, Genie, out Mount Hope, Andale area, I would appreciate someone. You don't live that far west. So I'd appreciate anyone that could serve on that. Does any other Commissioners have anything for other? Hey, there's no reason for an executive session today, so I'd like to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and at this time, call to order the meeting for the Fire District Number One for July 24th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
President. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone here wish to speak on the public agenda for Fire District Number One? Seeing no one, next item.
New Business, Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2020 Fire District Number One Budget.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. This morning is the first public hearing regarding the 2020 Fire District Number One Budget. It totals $20,109,346. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $17,867,837, which will require a mill levy of approximately 18.131 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it is over.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom before we do that? Seeing none, thank you, Tom. This time, I'd like to open the public This time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the budget for Fire District Number One. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on our budget for Fire District Number One? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing for Fire District Number One. Next item, please.
Item B, Correction of Error for Fire Protection Services Contract Invoice with Textron Aviation Incorporated.
Morning again, Brent, and happy birthday.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Commissioners, again for the record, Brent Shelton, Economic Development and Tax Systems Director with the Division of Finance. As you all are aware, Sedgwick County Fire District has entered into some fire protection contracts with recipients of tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds. This is on property located within the fire district, and these agreements establish that the payment is based on the valuation of that property. While we were automating the billing processes for fire protection service agreements, an error was discovered that affected Textron Inc., and the result was that the county had been underbilling them for a period of years. Since the fire service contracts are calculated as though they would generate that fire district levy if it was on the tax roll, we followed the correction of error process that we follow when taxable property is discovered to have been undervalued or underbilled, and those will routinely appear on your BOCC consent agenda. Textron is aware of the underbilling. They've agreed to pay upon receipt of the attached correspondence which reconciles these accounts, so the item before you is to approve that reconciliation of the underbilling to Textron, and authorize the chairman to sign. I'll stand for any questions.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Brent? Seeing no questions, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Brent. Go enjoy your birthday. After five.
You don't want to sing to him?
I don't sing very well, thank you. Do you want to sing?
No.
Oh. Next item, please.
Item C, Land Purchase for Fire Station 31 in Andale, Kansas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. Presenting to you today the land purchase for the building, the new station at Fire Station 31 in Andale. This was approved by the CIP Committee in January 31, 2019, and came to the county commissioners to be approved on the project on February 6th of 2019. The site requirements that we evaluated for Station 31 was that it had to be a 10,000-square-foot facility, have two 60-foot square drives, employee and public parking areas, and employee and public entrances, as well as some outside facilities, including some storage and generator. When we looked, we looked at several sites around Andale, and Assistant County Manager Rusty Leeds met with Mayor Kay Wood of Andale, and the Fire District staff, and some Fire District personnel also, and after looking at all the sites, we settled on the site that is a two-acre site that is just north of Andale, right at the city limits edge on 247th Street, just north of 61st. This site allows us a wide frontage for our drives. It allows, it's adjacent to the town, it has elevation, it's outside of the floodplain, it is, it nears all of the electrical, gas, sewer, and other utility fixtures that we are needed at that location, and it also provides us still within the proximity of Andale and direct relationship with the community. The land purchase agreement that we negotiated with the homeowner was for, or, excuse me, the landowner was for $108,900, and this is for a 180-day agreement, and during that time, we'll be able to do the environmental assessments, the plotting and planning, the utility and public services, and make sure everything is accessible by the road. And at this time, I recommend that we move forward with purchasing the land agreement with, for that, two acres.
Great, thank you very much, Doug, for the presentation today. I also want to thank Mayor Kay Wood and the city council out of Andale. I gave the mayor a call when we started working this and said, would you waive all the fees for connecting up to the utilities out there? And they agreed to do that, which saves all of our taxpayers some money on this entire project. I know that this is something that is vitally needed out there because of our current system, fire station that we have. I've been in it several times, and it is definitely in need of replacement, so I don't know what David's going to use it for here after we pull out of that and give it back to him out at the yard, but it's going to be yours, David. Very good, again. Thank you.
Your retirement facility? Retirement home?
Is there any questions for Chief? Seeing none, I move that we approve the contract. Authorize me to sign it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. We look forward to ribbon cutting on that. Next item, please.
Item D, A Resolution Providing for the Purchase of Certain Real Property Located in Sedgwick County.
Morning, Tanya.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager for Administrative Services. The resolution before you this morning is associated with a land purchase near the intersection of 61st Street North and 247th Street West in Andale for the future construction and use of Fire Station 31, as just previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This resolution delegates authority specifically to County Manager Tom Stoltz, Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman, and myself, to execute and deliver all zoning and plat applications, conveyances, affidavits, instruments, closing documents, deeds, and other documents, as may be necessary in order to effect and close the purchase of real estate property as authorized within the real estate purchase contract for this particular property. The purpose of this resolution is to allow staff to carry out the direction and intent of the Board of County Commissioners with regard to this property without each of these separate tasks requiring a vote by the board sitting as the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One governing body. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and recommend you adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Tanya? Seeing no questions whatsoever, I move that we adopt a resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Morning, again, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Item E on the agenda today.
Very good. Move to approve. Echo?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And does anything else need to come before the Fire Board?